All the honored brothers, thanking you for all your many blessings that people store. Lord, let me, God take you in this meeting, give us the wisdom to make the right decisions on behalf of citizens like this. And thank you for all the ones that thought it was robbery to come out to participate in our meeting. God continue to keep them and bless them. And those ones that seek, the ones that are fond of the reading, and the ones that stop, be with them, God. Take care of them, like you tended to take care of them, commit, keep us, keep us with their unit, keep us with their law. For one, and all these blessings be sustained, amen?
Is the German pledge of allegiance the flag is there? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. I am a nation, I am a God, we are the ones who have liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Um, council members, since um people that have our mics uh hooked up with us this evening, uh we have to speak loud in order for the audience to hear what we got to say. So with that being said, we're on item number three, approval of uh the agenda. This is what Hampton County Council, June second, twenty twenty five, meeting agenda. So what? So uh uh do anybody have any, any uh see anything that need to be uh added or deleted?
It's third, Mr. Chair, number nine point one and nine point two, be moved to executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made after properly second and discussion. All those who are on approval of designed deal, uh contract for form due diligence uh on the conversion of the high school site to a recreation center, and also nine point two request approval for all those who are on approval of that, stand if I raise your right hand. Anyone opposed, anyone standing? We're now on item number four, approval of minutes. This is the meeting minutes from May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, Hampton County Council meeting. What is the pleasure, council?
Mr. Chair. Eight one, eight one. There's a typo, just must be prepared for this, as you're aware.
Can you say what, what um the typo is?
We approve the county administrator to go to Grant's Farm, here, and it reads motion to approve the county administrator or someone from his staff.
Okay.
It needs to be your county administrator.
Okay, so um right, okay, so I'm listening, um that change, the typo means six, uh uh we approve for the county administrator to attend this conference. Yes. With that being said, uh is that a simple motion?
Yeah, I mean the motion that will approve the property.
The motion has been made, uh is there a second?
Second.
That's a properly second and good discussion. All those who are approving of the uh meeting minutes uh from May nineteenth, uh twenty twenty five, with uh the necessary uh uh change in the typo error, show your two by raising your right hand. Anyone opposed, anyone standing? We're now on item number five, presentations, five point one, Veterans Affairs introduction, um Director Naomi Sanders.
Who is going to, uh is she here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. I would like to have the honor of introducing our new veteran affairs director, who's been our, about a director for a little over a year, maybe longer. So it's exciting to have Ms. Naomi start, uh, all you know, Jeff. Great, great. So she's a permanent.
Yeah.
She's from the area, and she's asked the team to, so, thank you, she's here.
Um, I'm just looking forward to, to being able to serve the veterans in our community, to make sure that they have a place to go and to offer whatever services I can for them because they have given so much of themselves and sometimes the only thing that they need is a listening ear and so being able to be that person to let them know that they are not alone. And serving the foster service is very important and vital and so I hope that I can serve them and our community well. And I hope to have the support of everybody here and everybody in our community so that we can build a strong foundation for them.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next item on the presentation is the South Carolina Association of Counties Board of Directors Scholarship. And the recipient of that scholarship is um um Ashley Phillips. Uh, but before we ask Ms. Phillips to come up, um, we want to uh recognize her and receive this award. Let me tell you a little bit about um Ms. Phillips. That um based on the application that she uh filled out or applied for the scholarship, um, you know, it is my pleasure to really, you know, recognize this, this outstanding, outstanding member of the Hampton County High School, um, class of twenty twenty five. And, and again, she is the winner of the South Carolina Association of Counties twenty twenty five Board of Directors Scholarship for Hampton County. Uh, the Association of Counties Scholarship Program was established in nineteen ninety eight to recognize outstanding students who plan to further their education in our state. Each year, the program awards one time five thousand dollar scholarships to graduating high school seniors who are residents of counties chosen in a voteation by the association. Hampton County was selected in twenty twenty five. Throughout her time at Hampton County High School, this year's recipient was the co-captain for the Bosie tennis team. She was also named to the All Region uh Tennis Team, received a coach's award, and was twice named a Scholar-Athlete for tennis. She was a teacher cadet, the assistant editor for the Yearbook Club, a delegate for Fort Camp Wildwood and Pamela Girl State, and was Miss Hampton twenty twenty four for the town of Hampton. She is an active volunteer in the community, participating in various service activities, including litter cleanups. In addition to her academic and extracurricular activities, she has worked for two years at Pamela State Bank as a teller runner. Her passion for education inspired her to pursue a degree in elementary education at Clemson University this fall. It is my pleasure to announce the recipient of the South Carolina Association of Counties twenty twenty five Board of Directors Scholarship for Hampton County, Ashley Phillips. And Ashley, you are a remarkable young woman. You are a remarkable young woman, and the Hampton County Council and the South Carolina Association of Counties wish you continued success and a very bright future. So if the county, uh, the all of council members, including the county administrator, uh, join me up front and we present this um plaque in recognition of Ms. Phillips' achievements. So if you stand, as we kind of tie ourselves around here. You come, you stand there, and all council members and all the council officials, except around, around us. Uh, I know that we presented this award to you at your uh Wednesday program, and so, uh, again, congratulations again.
Yes, I think.
And, 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 and much success in your job at Clemson University.
Thank you. Gotcha.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I enjoy presenting awards.
Especially when it all was money.
It's more than being educated.
And being, being for that. Absolutely. Our next item on the agenda is the uh ad, an uh art tool event. And we want to uh recognize Ms. Karen, um Carrie, and uh Ms. Hollis, a priestess. So I think, uh, where is our deputy administrator? As they are trying to get the PowerPoint presentation uh together, I'd like to uh uh acknowledge Dr. Sheffield. How you doing?
I'm great.
This evening, and also our, some of our uh elected officials who's here, I put forth, this uh is Chief, and uh our incoming uh uh treasurer, this uh, how it's going? Uh, have I missed any of them?
Auditor.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Our auditor, uh, thank you for coming, uh, this evening, and uh any more elected officials. I hate to start naming because uh I'll miss you. Well, thank you for coming out this evening, thank you. Ready?
Yes. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Karen Terry, and this is, we were co-chairing together. This is Hollis Priestert, um, for the inaugural Hampton County Ag and Art Tour. We are, um, one of twenty-one counties across Savannah, I mean, Savannah, sorry, across South Carolina that, uh, participated in this event. And, uh, what you're looking at is a logo that was designed for Hampton County specifically, um, by Clemson Extension. So Clemson Extension asked for some feedback from us, um, on, um, the types of, you know, tell us about Hampton County. So we talked about watermelons and summer and heat and the railroad track and all of these sorts of things. And out of all of that fifteen-minute discussion, this is what, um, they came up with and sent back to us and asked for approval. So this will be our permanent logo as we move forward each year with Hampton County, um, Ag and Art Tour. And if you look, um, very strategically placed in the middle of that, um, railroad is an H in there. Um, you can see this kind of disconnected, um, and it was her way of, of making sure that, um, Hampton County, um, got pointed out even better, um, in our logo. I want to start by talking about our, um, vendors that were there. For those of you who didn't, um, weren't able to attend, um, like I said, this was our first year. And Ag and Art, um, is exactly what it sounds like. So the idea is that we, um, are able to bring attention and recognition to what agriculture does for the economy in Hampton County and, um, to be able to showcase the artisans that live here and in the surrounding areas and give them an opportunity to show what they can do, um, for our economy here as well. So, um, what you see on the left side are a list of some of the artisans that were there. Um, anything from quilts to chopping blocks to bread, um, one-
Onions.
Onions. Thank you for your onion purchase, um.
Right.
Um, the, the joke is my niece was running the onion tent and she tried to sell him two twenty-five pound bags of onions instead of just one. She's a very good salesperson. Um, there were wreaths, um, one lady painted saws and, um, discs off of disc carros and things like that. Um, and then on the tour site and the ag vendor side, we had two tour sites, one at Web Wildlife Center, um, and then the other at the Hampton County Airport. So at the airport, um, we had, um, a plane from the Forestry Commission was there. We also had, um, another, uh, plane that was, um, from Queen Products, which of course ties into the agricultural side of this, um, and also the economic side of how they use that plane for their business. Um, Chicken Scratch Calligraphy, which is Hollis Priestert's business, um, she helped with our, um, decorating while we were there, among a million other contacts that she had. Um, shout out to Roger Webb and multitude of his family who brought, um, their antique tractors out to the airport, um, for people to kind of peruse and see how, um, agriculture used to be managed. And then Ginny Parnell, um, provided our farm animals. So there were rabbits and baby ducks and a goat, and that was, those were the farm animals we had. And that was all out at the airport. And then I wanted to give you some hard data, what does all this mean? We invited all these people to the airport, we have asked people to come by Web Wildlife Center. So we had a hundred and seventeen attendees that came out to Ag and Art at the airport. Uh, we had thirty-five at Web, which we knew Web Wildlife was a toss-up. It is a beautiful place and a great resource for Hampton County. So we wanted to try to pull people to the other end of, um, the county, but, um, we knew that from the airport to Web wasn't exactly a, a quick drive. So we were happy to have, um, the visitors that we had out there. Um, from our social media, just our Facebook site, we had almost fifty-one thousand views, um, on our social media page, which we thought was fantastic.
Yes.
Um, everything about the social media page brought light to Ag and Art, but also brought light to Hampton County, um, and hopefully led to people, um, looking a little more into what Hampton County had to offer them. And I wanted to say thank you, um, to a lot of government officials, um, in our county. So I saw every member of county council, um, at the airport. Thank you all very much for attending, it means a lot to be supported by the leaders, um, in our county. Um, we had mayors from Estill and Hampton, members from Faville Town Council, Gifford Town Council. I see other people in here who were also government officials that attended, and I'm sure I didn't get everybody, please don't take it personally. These were, um, these were people that I saw. Um, and, and again, just pointing out that, you know, these types of efforts have to start somewhere and the support of, um, your leaders in the county is extremely important to the success of these types of events. The rest of these are pictures because I think it tells a much better story than me standing up here talking to you about a bunch of words and numbers. Um, that's my niece on the left, that was the, um, onion salesman, in case you're interested. His seller? On the, um, on the left side, the flower shop, this was, um, one of the booths that Hollis was running. So it was, um, an opportunity for children that came out to plant, um, flowers and take them home with them. Um, the bottom left picture I wanted to show so that you could see, um, we had a, um, food truck there and we had a place set up for people to hang out and eat, not to just come and peruse. Um, and they were, they are overlooking the airport. This is at the airport site, of course. Um, and we had about, I saw three or four planes that came and went during the day. And so of course, it was really good for people to be there, enjoying themselves, but then have that. Lots of kids were oohing and aahing over, um, plane, being that close to planes landing and taking off. Uh, this is a little more on the agricultural side, um, of the airport site. Um, so you can see the antique tractors, um, that's Queen's plane, and then the forestry plane is there. And then I just love this picture where, um, that antique tractor, um, is taxiing the, um, agriculture plane back to the runway, um, when we were closing down for the day. Um, shout out to Murdaugh Reynolds, they brought, um, one of their tractors out that's more modern so that anybody that came could see what they were like as well. And then, um, these are a whole bunch of vendors, um, just to give you an idea of what was out there and what type of event it was. And it was, you know, it was a really upbeat event, there were a lot of families that came out, which I think is important to mention that, you know, moms and dads and their kids, or grandma and their kids, um, a lot of people with their children, they realized it was an event for a family. And then this last slide is, um, Web Wildlife, so we had two vendors out there. Um, one is, uh, Missy Lane, who is an author that is actually, um, out of, um, Clio, which is closer to Web than we are right now. Um, so it was meaningful to her. And then Laura McKenzie, um, the artist, had a lot of her photography out there too, as an artisan. Um, and Web actually worked with us and developed a self-guided tour, so they had a map when you got out there that they gave to you. Um, and it kind of took you through all of the historic part of, um, Web Wildlife. So, um, that is a recap of our inaugural Ag and Art event, many, many more to come. Um, if anyone's interested, October will be kicking off our second annual, so please send them our way. We'd love to have, um, a new group of eyes and more people who, um, are willing to lead this event in the future.
Hopefully, hopefully, I'll be done with the onions by, because I'm eating onions in my cereal now.
Yeah, we'll get you some more by then.
No, no.
I'm so sorry, I, I cannot, I can't end without thanking the committee. I had this lab very purposefully to make sure that I had, um, acknowledgement for every committee member that was there. You can see it come from an array of organizations, but honestly, everybody, everybody's contacts, everybody's time and effort, and most of the work was thrown outside of a committee meeting. Um, so if you see any of these committee members, please tell them thank you for all the work that they put into Ag and Art this year. Ms. Joanne, who is literally everywhere, she was our support person. Um, and then thank you to Chris for being our liaison, um, back to the county.
Well, thank you for all the effort that you all have, and I'd like to make this, uh, ad, um, and, uh, arts tool a success for the first time for Hampton County. And, uh, the county council would like to show their appreciation by giving it, uh, for you and also, um, Ms. Priestert, uh, if a, um, certificate, but it's fine, but you all scheduled. So council would draw me up front, yeah?
I just came into a presentation.
I'm afraid of this picture, it might be some onions.
We didn't have onions to share with everybody. Those are actually rotary onions, so.
I've got enough.
Thank you. I'm a little pressured. Yes.
I'm just all in here, kind of get, kind of look close.
Yeah, I got everybody. One, two, three.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, five point four, on the presentation, is Hampton County School District, District Year Twenty-Six opposed budget. Uh, and, uh, we have with us, and our president, Dr. Glenda Sheffield.
Good evening, council. Um, at this time, I'm really going to turn it over to our chief financial officer, Kathy Cloucher. As you're aware, what we're going to go through with you this evening, we shared a copy, is we've only had our second approved, approval of the reading of the budget. Our third reading will not take place until tomorrow at our, um, standards board meeting. So we did not want to come before you, um, telling you it's our third reading when it has not been officially approved by our board. So we're going to go through the second reading that was approved at our previous meeting on May fourth. So I'm going to turn it over to our CFO.
Thank you, Dr. Sheffield. Good evening, Mr. Council. Um, I've come to present the board agreement, she said, the second, so the second approved board meeting. And in that, in the packet that y'all got from me, it includes what our, um, for twenty-five, twenty-six budget would be. Um, and in it is your revenue, which is a total of thirty-one, um, millions, oh eighty-four, nine of nine. This, to help you with the, with the aboriginal taxes, that's eleven million, oh thirty-five, one oh five. That is made up from taking the assessed value that was given to me and then, um, using the prior year's operating mill, which was two forty-three point thirty-three, which got to increase by two point nine six CPI rate. That equates to, um, seven point two zero, a lot more meal rate increase, to changing the, um, meal rate to two fifty point fifty-three. So that's what the eleven million, oh thirty-five, one oh five is based on. Um, in your, for the expenditures, our expenditures was actually thirty-two million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five. We ended up having to take one million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars from fund balance to be able to balance that budget to thirty-one million, oh eighty-four, nine of nine. Is there any questions that anyone has?
Any questions? Any questions?
What, excuse me, what was the mileage last year on that?
The mileage last year was, um, two forty-three point thirty-three.
And this year?
It's two fifty point fifty-three.
Two fifty point fifty-three?
Mm-hmm. And again, that was using the, um, CPI increase of two point nine six percent, which will total to seven point two zero meals.
Who said the value of a meal?
The value of one meal?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, value of one meal would be, um, at the, the value of a meal is forty-seven, eight, seventy-six, seventy-three. But we don't pull the entire meal because of the, um, collection rate. So the actual amount that's in this eleven million would be forty-four thousand, oh forty-six point fifty-nine.
Do you have any, when you get that number?
All right, it starts off with just says value that's given to us, and then we actually have to remove our parts to get, and we came up with forty-seven million, eight, seventy-six, seven twenty-five, which would be a meal of forty-seven, eight point six, forty, only seventy-three. But we don't take the full meal because we have to take into consideration that collection rate.
No, wait, wait.
So our actual meal is for that eleven million is forty-four thousand, forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
You're heated to say collection, right? Don't you figure?
No, I figured what the family gave me last year at ninety-two percent.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? Just waiting, do you, do you have any, um, any numbers that?
I don't have to go get them, I didn't bring that with me.
You didn't bring it?
No.
If you have a question, I will give it to you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? Counsel? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We do have a couple seats back here. Good evening, Chair.
Hey, good evening, Chair. How you doing, sir?
Goodbye, goodbye. Our next item on the agenda is item number five point five, Low Country Legal Volunteers Introduction, Ms. Harlan Dunbar.
Hey there. Good evening, everyone. I am not Harlan Dunbar. I am with Dr. Dunbar this evening. I am very blessed to be so. I am fit to be the director of Low Country Legal Volunteers. Now, we have partnered with Dr. Dunbar as a community ambassador outreach to Hampton County. We've actually gotten to serve Hampton County for over twenty-five years now. However, year over year, the client that we serve with our free legal services has been around thirty percent. That is not enough. We have had multiple reasons in outreach. This particular year, twenty-fifth year service, that are pointing us straight into Hampton County. So we're very excited about that. And just a little bit about legal volunteers is we do what I would call the brighten butter type of law for free for low-income folks living at or below two hundred percent of the federal poverty guidelines. We do family law, child support, domestic violence restraining orders, wills, healthcare powers of attorney. We also do eviction defense and unsafe housing action. And we do this on a volunteer basis. We have a very small staff, which now includes Dr. Dunbar as community ambassador on a contact basis. So we're just so excited to really launch into Hampton County. We need your support. We need your education, your information, together with the guidance of Dr. Dunbar, to really do this work properly. A couple of different things I do want to highlight that really made me excited to be in Hampton County in particular is we got particular funding to expand what we call our medical partnerships, would be for just Hampton, Conference of Health, and Youth Regionals. We're developing those relationships right now to where we can go and serve in clinic or in hospital where it's hard for you to get the folks who are low-income to take down those barriers of transportation, trust, and just not knowing that we're there for folks for free that happen to be low-income. Another thing we're getting ready to do in Hampton County with the assistance of Dr. Dunbar is to provide what we have been training to teach is justice navigation training. So in South Carolina, we went to train at least three trainings of justice navigation training. And what does that mean? It's all the folks that are community leaders doing this work already, that are pastors, that are true community leaders, social workers, other folks in the nonprofit arena, how to split, spot legal issues. Sorry, I got time tied there. So we're excited about that. It's going to start off with everything from air property to simple wills, to all the areas that we serve, and spot out the resources for folks in Hampton County that are available, such as SC Legal Services, that's one of our community partners now, so for air property, and really empower local leaders with that information so that they can share that with folks that happen to be low-income that they come into contact with. So they feel comfortable coming to us and getting those resources that they so desperately need and also deserve. And of course, we're going to also continue to provide direct legal representation in all those legal services areas of payment law, housing, as well as wills. And with that, I'll turn it over to my trusted partner, Dr. Dunbar.
We want to take this opportunity to thank Hampton County for allowing us to come and introduce ourselves. We're here to serve, I'm a servant. We're here to serve our people to make sure that they get the help that they need because we've found that there's a lot of people that don't know where to go. But we're, we're offering them the opportunity to come to us and we're helping them. We're in the process of getting an office in Hampton County. And we will have it out soon of where the, you know, the operation will be. But right now, I'm just doing, going from door to door and meeting different people to let them know what we're doing here because we're here to help. And it's free if you follow the guidance. It is free. And we want to thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you. We all come to Hampton County. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that I've had opportunity to work with Dr. Dunbar over thirty years with different community clubs. So I'm excited about it. I've spoken to her already, anything that we can do. Yep, six. I'm going to do them all, one, two, look forward to it.
We thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Is there a phone number available now?
Yes, sir. So our main phone number is eight four three, eight one five, one five, seven zero. And for folks that want to apply in either English or Spanish, twenty-four seven for free legal services, they can go on our website, which is just lowcountrylegalcopersonas.org. So we try to make it as accessible as possible in as many ways as possible. And we are so blessed to have Dr. Dunbar on the team.
Calling this number, would they ask any specific person?
You would, yes, sir. You would get a volunteer. It can get all the information given. If you need to speak with me, just ask for Ann. And I'm happy to address any questions or ideas, share ideas and thoughts on the growth in Hampton County because I know we have a lot to learn and we're excited about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentations for this evening. We're now at item number six, public hearings. We have a six point one, an ordinance to amend, the amend and extend the term of agreement for the government for Joint County Industrial Park, which is known as the park in Hampton County, Hampton County, South Carolina. So now the floor is open for a public hearing. Do you want to have any comments on public, on that particular ordinance? Is there anyone from certain kind of line that wants to speak on this? So the public could interpret what this law is about?
Sure, um, reading the council. For the sake of the public, this is a tax-sharing agreement between Colleton County and Hampton County. And in this case, it only affects Hampton County in a positive way because it'll be Colleton's expansion. And so this, what this will do is it'll just add on to tax revenue, property tax revenue that'll be shared to Hampton County. Nothing will be going from Hampton County to Colleton in this instance. So it's just positive. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel? So are there any comments from the public? If none, we now close this session of the public hearing. We now, our item number seven, our public comments. Are there any public comments?
Yes, sir. We just have one, Sina Lloyd. She has a public comment for the library budget.
Hello. I chair county council members, Hampton County administrator, and citizens. I'm here to speak on behalf of Allen Dell Hampton Jasper Regional Library System and Hampton County Libraries Proposed Appropriations. We are, we are extremely grateful for the administrator's recommendation of the minimum necessary contributions towards the Hampton County library operations and Esco Public Library operations in the FY Twenty-Six budget. I would like to acknowledge that the county appropriations directly funds staff. That's what your county appropriations fund. Our state aid is then matched, and that's what goes to our programs, our collection development, our summer reading program, in which I brought you some gifts as we are kicking that off today. We would greatly appreciate a reconsideration of our original request, which would be an additional twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars from the proposed amount in, in the current reading of the budget. This is to ensure that, that staff can receive a cost of living increase as well as coverage of the four point five percent increase in the PIBA health benefits from the state legislature that was sent down by the governor in May. I know the budgets are tight, but we tried to propose to kind of our tightest budget that we could operate with here in Hampton County. I did bring along our summer reading program information here. We really hope that you all participate, including our community citizens. And it's not just for kids, it's for adults too. I also invite you guys to visit library, our libraries. We have many programs over the summer. Please come out to one of the programs. Our program book is in these pamphlet, or in these bags here. And I want to also offer our community room, a little bit bigger than this room here. If you'd like to have any future council meetings in that room, it is available to the council. And I'd be happy to work that through. See you all at the library, sir.
Any questions?
Yes. I have, you're the finance team, Danny Francis, and I have a question. This is the first, I mean, we just posted our public project last week, so we can circle back with the library folks. I mean, we're downstairs, we want you to, yeah, we got our, is that our financial division? As we go through the second reading tonight, I'm going to put four priorities for the county, county employees. First is, is my priority, but I hope I could speak to that for the night.
Any comments, counsel? Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Any more, any other public comments? We're now on item number eight, appointments. Eight point one, Ms. DeBida Roberts to the Economic Development Commission. Everyone should have looked at the, her application that she has submitted to, uh, applied to the, served for our Economic Development Commission. With that being said, go ahead, Mr. Chair. No, discussion. Okay, if there's no discussion, we want to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we're wanting to be a rock to the Economic Development Commission.
Say it.
A motion has been made and has been promptly settled. Uh, and we found discussion, comments. If none, all those who are approval of Ms. DeBida Roberts to the Economic Development Commission, show your approval, raise your right hand. Anyone oppose? Anyone stand?
If you're impressed.
She's, oh, okay. Yeah, if you're willing to. Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you. We're now, item number nine, we have referred that to executive session. So we'll now go to item number ten, resolutions and proclamations. We have none for tonight. Item number eleven, ordinances. Eleven point one, the third reading of the ordinance. The one that we just had in public hearing, which is an ordinance to amend, amend, and extend the term of agreement for development for Joint County Industrial Park, known as the park between Colleton County and Hampton County, South Carolina, to further amend the agreement for development for Joint County Industrial Park so as to include additional property in Colleton County as part of the park and other matters related there too. We all have already heard the explanation for that, so what is the pleasure, counsel?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we're, we're loving our party.
A motion has been made, is there second?
Second.
And property second. Any other comments on the discussion? If none, all those who are approval of an ordinance to amend, amend, and extend the term of agreement to develop, uh, for development for Joint County Industrial Park or the park between Colleton County, Hampton County, South Carolina, show your approval, raise your right hand. Anyone oppose? Anyone stand? We're now on item number eight, dev point two, second reading of ordinances. This is the second reading for the fiscal year Twenty-Twenty-Six budget. Please want to.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Uh, myself and, uh, Yeg, Mr. Lacy, and also the honor, this, uh, we have, she's gonna, she's gonna help us with the presentation this evening. In terms of formulation of this year's, this budget, we went back to the county goals and strategic budget initiatives that you got, that you have outlined for the county to move forward. Really moving the top, the county forward, fiscal responsibility, strategic investments, economic development, operational efficiencies, and transparent engagement. So those, those are some of the key points when we talk about the formation of this year's budget. You do not have this presentation in your packet. So we're going to have another workshop on Monday to slow down and talk about the budget in detail before we head into third reading because I'm sure there'll be other responses in regards to our, our take on the formation of the budget. Just taking, taking a step back, probably taking a different approach, talking about the state of South Carolina. South Carolina is growing, leaps and bounds. It's, it is one of the fastest-growing spaces in the country. I know you've probably seen the news, seen the buzz, and you can, can just look around and see a lot of achievements that's taken place in other counties in and around South Carolina. What's that look like? From an economic strength standpoint, that's eight point nine B investment statewide. From an infrastructure connectivity standpoint, that's expanding across states around the state. From a population standpoint, it's a fascinating, growing population in this part of the country. And that's specific to the Low Country. So what's that mean for Hampton County's strategic response and preparation for that, right? Aligning our budget, the plan for the future as we make adjustments to address and do things a little bit differently in the county, focus on fiscal responsibility and transparency, prioritizing local economic opportunities like this presentation that we presented today for walking through the details and formation of the budget. Our neighbors, Jasper County, growing leaps and bounds. Jasper County is the third fastest-growing U.S. county in the country as of two thousand twenty-four. That's right at our back door. So that means growth is coming to Hampton County, and are we getting prepared for it, is the question. And that's what this administration is planning and hoping to do. This is another look at some data, some context. But Hampton County, we do have some challenges. We all know that. But we cannot focus and remain on our challenges. We have to figure out how we can move the county forward. As we balance our challenges, we are at the end of a forensic audit that should be ready to report out the next, next month or so. So there's some data, some information that demonstrates the county has been pressed down during the county's business. But some of the challenges, we do have some, some struggles around our population ticking up, or the ticking down. We have issues around topic of poverty in the county, limited healthcare and access to recreational facilities. But there are opportunities. You know, we, we can, we can prioritize and, and, and prepare to increase income for folks here in the county if we budget. Property values going up, and there's employment opportunities as industry comes. There's some context about the mileage. I thought Mr. Williams probably would be more suited to kind of walk you through and talk through some of the mileage context.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am Latonya Williams, your county auditor. And, um, right now I'm gonna go through the history of the county village where, um, you can see from 2010 to 2012, the county maintained a levy of between 190 to 196, and in the north district, which was our low levy district, um, a millage of 220 to 227. And in our high levy, levy district, which is the south district, a levy of 309 to 331 was implemented. And, um, an area with a relatively high property rate versus the low levy is due to higher costs for services and lower property values. So the south district, which is like Estes, Hickory, and Lou Ray, Furman, those are considered our low levy districts where the millage is a little bit higher in that area. And from 2013 to 22, the county helped stay with a millage of 196.8, the north district at 198, the south district at 299.0. And in 2021, due to consolidation of the school districts, the county increased, the, the county operation village was increased to 208.09. And the school district was increased to 233.7, and that's the combination of both north and south districts, kind of to level it out. In '22, the millage was increased for the county to 217.5 by a total of 9.41 mills, which accounted for the CPI growth of 4.7%. So the CPI, which is, you'll hear us say CPI a lot, and that's the Consumer Price Index. This is not the same as inflation, but it is a key component used when they calculate and also to understand inflation. So while inflation refers to the general increase of prices for goods and services, the CPI is used to track the changes. And, um, and that's according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So in 2021, for the calendar year of '22, the CPI rate for the state of South Carolina was at 8%. So what they do is they calculate our population and they calculate the decrease or the increase of each county. And then they come up with a number that says this is your cap of where, how much you can increase your millage during that year. So in, um, 2021, yeah, for calendar year '22, the CPI was 8%. And the population for Hampton County had decreased by 0.67%. That negative population factor is deemed a zero percent. Anything in the negative is considered zero percent. And the cap was set for 8% for Hampton County, where we were able to change our millage um, by 17.4 mills, but we did not, we, we stayed at the 217. So for calendar year '23, the CPI for the state of South Carolina was 4.12%. The population for Hampton County had decreased by 8%. The negative population factor was deemed at 0% again, where there was anything less than, um, zero in the negative would be calculated as 0%. Therefore, the cap was set at 4.12% for 2024, '25 fiscal year, giving us a millage of 8.9 that we could have used, and we did not. For 2023, calendar year 2024, the CPI for the state was set at 2.95%. The population for Hampton County actually did increase by 0.03%. And this is a trend that we hope will continue, but right now, you know, we're unsure. And due to this, the cap for Hampton County was set at 2.98%. So if you, if you see, we still, they usually allow us the, the cap for the whole state, but it was set at 2.98%, which is 6.4 for 2025, '26 fiscal year. So though, I give you those numbers because those create what we call a lookback bank. And by law, we are allowed three years' lookback to increase the county's millage. So for this fiscal year of '25 to '26, the plan was to increase the county's operation portion of the millage to 222.48 um, by integrating 6.2 mills that we would take from the financial recovery, which was implemented in 2021, which was 10.2 mills, so took 6.2 mills from the financial recovery. And the rest was our millage cap that we were able to, to grab. We didn't grab the whole amount. We just needed the six, I think it was like 6.4.
That, Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a question. Listen to the, uh, Finance Director for the School. Um, understated that you, how much can the school district increase their really without the consent of the county, county council?
Um, 2.9, I think it was 2.97.
And that's the max?
Yeah.
And will you say that again? I was about to ask what.
2.97. Um, the county is 2.98. They calculated the school at 2.97.
So 2.97. So that's without consent of the county?
Yes.
Ms. Williams, we, we, we have a question.
Yes.
Someone has a question, um, um, I see the school operation, uh, millage where, um, 244. Where is it?
243.33.
Why was, you know, is it why they increased it?
They were allowed to increase for CPI as well last year, and that, and they, they increased.
That was about what, 10, 10 mills?
Yeah.
So they increased it by?
Yeah.
250.
Yeah, 250.5. Yeah, 250.53.
And I guess I'm always pissed, you know, by the increase of mill.
I, I think it was for CPI that they are taking what is allowed by law and decide to increase.
Now, compared to what the school district is increasing mills by and what the county
Right.
is increasing by, and we're not going at the rate that the school district is.
Right, we're not. We have not increased the county millage in three years. So '22, '23, and '24 were all the same. So this year, after, you know, after a couple of tough conversations, we decided that, um, maybe it was time to increase the millage to get us on a path of improvement.
And we still not moving up, increasing our millage to, you know, the tax bill, we use the money back.
Right, we, we were able to redistribute some of that. And, um, that's why we took from the financial reserve. That was the 10.2 mills, so we reduced that to four mills.
That's a big increase.
Yeah.
And the mill, and mill bay that she shared the map with the school, it is how I have that, the base mill.
Um, yeah, it should be.
It, it's much higher than what she, she told me.
Yeah, that, I did ask for, you know, the numbers that were used so I could verify it. I haven't received information yet, but my hope was to be able to verify it.
You know, I know she gave us a mill down on the map, but it would be lower than the, based on the increase in mill.
All right. That's why I asked what was the value of that mill.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I had the same question in mind, but.
Um, because the Department of Revenue recommends that we use the most current information available, that, that's why I believe it is different. Um, I believe their source was from 2023 calculation. So I wanted to verify that, which is why I asked for the information to see exactly what was used. Because I was asked a question. Um, they did ask why was my number different from the number they saw on the Department of Revenue website? And the reason it's different is because they're, the Department of Revenue requests reports from us every year. And so we report behind. So our report last year was for tax year 2023, which was from July 23 to June of '24. And that's the information, well, beyond that. Yeah, that's the information that was submitted for that report that was due in October. But this year, the report will be from July of 2024 to June of 2025, which is different because we did have an increase in the, the values of our, our values. So, you know, but for whatever reason, it wasn't used. So I did want to verify that.
And, and may I say one little thing? When, when, when the miller rate, I mean, when the set value goes up, that mean you think less taxes. We'll make sure we understand that. So it's good that we're growing as, as we handle it. It says value, what, what kind of growth. So that's why I want to make sure we, we get that straight and, and, but anyway, that, that'll work itself out.
And we postponed the reassessment this year, postponed it. So that we'll be able to, um, adjust those next year. But for this year, we decided to just, we only added a little to not, not the full capacity of what we could have added, which was the 6.4, I can't even put exactly, mills from the bank, which was, we used what was allowed for this year, which was 6.4. And a little bit from the bank. The former capital plan reserve will now, will serve as dedicated function of addressing capital improvement needs. So now we've taken from that 10.2, reduced it to four, and we've designated that for capital improvements only. And then we do have an eight mill for, um, debt service. So the, the priority is to, we, we want to prioritize the bills in the county to get that down some more, because we've done, I feel like we've done a good job at getting that reduced. But we wanna, you know, attack that a little bit more. So we decided to designate eight mills for, strictly for paying bills, at the pasted bills. So that's how we came up with a, um, it's a total of 234.48. When you, um, when you add, just for county, on the screen, there's the fire district, the fire capital reserve. So I did not include that in this calculation, but it's 234.48. But, um, when you see it on your bills, it will create a change of like $16 if your property value is at $50,000, and, um, $33.40 if it's over 100, if it's 100,000, and over 100,000, it creates a, a change of $50.10. And, um, I just wanted to throw some comparison numbers there for, um, between Hampton County and other counties. So, um, for Allendale County, um, with a population of 8,039, has the highest millage in the state. Um, next would be Bamberg County with a population of 13,311. And Hampton County comes in third with a population of 18,561. So compared to those counties, Hampton County is third as far as the millage rate.
In terms of population to size?
Population and mill rate. So I tried to take this, one with the population that were the closest to us, and, you know, when we factor together, we're like third.
But one thing I'm glad, sure, that, that we pointed out is the, is what your, your tax could increase based on the value of your home. It breaks it very, you know, it breaks it down very plainly there. The max on a $150,000 house is $50.10. But I mean, you know, we, we, we throw that away every day almost on something that we, you know, on some proof or something like that. But, but anyway, we want the taxpayers to realize what your increase could possibly be. Uh, if, if the miller rate was to go up, and, uh, and like she's pointed out to us, for the previous years, we have not had a millage increase in the county. And, uh, we're talking about some other things that I'm pretty sure we can demonstrate about why we need this. So that people can understand that we, we just find that people just survive if one brain counted into 20%. It's based on a lot of areas that, uh, with the internet systems and computers and that kind of thing that, that the county needs to, to upgrade, so just want to make everybody aware of this. Hopefully, we can just make it, for anybody who understand, I'm gonna say the bill's going up, it may go up, but you can see how much it would impact your household budget.
And it was, it was our sense of being more physically responsible.
Absolutely.
By we distributed the, the millage for the debt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. As you can see, we take our approach with, which we engage our parties that have a value in the conversation. Ms. Williams, um, she's, she's an asset to the county. We have a new treasurer that we take and see. It's gonna be a real blessing to the county. The county's gonna receive some changes across the board, so it's pretty exciting about the changes to come. But we wanted to be able to present information to you where it's explained and understood. And again, we're gonna have a workshop on Monday, and I'll have additional context to really pull this apart, so you can ask more questions if you, if you talk about it. Um, just, just we threw this in here. When we talked about the, uh, the dollars associated with the financial recovery plan that was put in place a couple of years ago. You know, we've, we've made some slight progress. We said that a long ways ago. Uh, we really feel like when we dig into some of what the forensic audit folks give back to us, we're gonna have to continue to kind of plow ahead, but, um, there is some slight progress in some spaces. Um, so I just kind of wanted to throw that, that reminder in there. So to justify the naming and re-allocating recommendation, right? Going back to what Ms. Williams said, we're not grabbing all of that village. We are recycling what we have, right? And so the first thing we did, we renamed the, um, the financial recovery and capital reserve title. What we found is that, as it is, it's very confusing when you have a conversation with, with banking institutions and professionals. We were going through a bond exercise, because they were saying, hey, is this a, is this a financial recovery notice, or is this a capital reserve notice, right? You can't, you can't have one and the same, but it's been confusing and usually implies deficit emergency fund by capital plans implies long-term planning, right? One of the things I did, we looked at counties that had some issues with CPTS funding. I looked at their budgets post the issues and after the CPTS stuff. Richard County was one of those counties. Um, one of the things that they did was really clean up the structure of their village, demonstrate transparency and how things are defined, so we really looked at best practices to kind of, kind of think ahead. And so change financial recovery plan reserve to capital plan reserve. The name change indicates saving for long-term, long-term investments, which we all know we need, we fix, roads fix, and we need the purchase of equipment in the county, which is something that we're working on doing. The reallocating of funds, moving some of the previously named financial recovery plan reserve into the general operating fund and maintain a portion of the capital plan reserve. And I'm gonna break that out in the bottom, but, but how much of that money is being used, right? So 6.2 mills will move into the general fund. Okay? That leaves four in relation to the capital, capital plan. There's a total of ten point two in that military lot. We took six point two within the general fund, so we pay our bills. There's some other things we need to get done moving in the county. And we left, the, the recommendations will leave four in the capital plan, so we can prepare to do some things long-term. I'll pause it and see if you have any questions about that.
Can you tell me the difference in the structure of that mill? You take six point two from the capital reserve. Now it's on four. What is the timeframe of the growth of the capital reserve?
I think in that, in that, uh, the capital reserve right now in that count is maybe just over, well, we back up. We, we're gonna have to do some auditing of some books. When Ms. Alice takes, takes the seat, so we're waiting on that. So I'll give you a, a cleaner number of what, what that is. Um, looking at some accounts, it's, but ideally it's about two hundred and thirty three thousand one eighty eight for that capital plan reserve. When you think about tax year, that's, that's the anticipated fund that I'm coming for that.
With the four mill.
Yes, sir. Um, so justification, one, one of the things that I think is important for the county. I have a hard time hiring folks in the county. I wear multiple hats, with long hours, which I'm not complaining, I love Hampton County. But there is a theme during this budget cycle. Um, people are tired, overworked, and then feel unappreciated. Um, you compound that with a notion that folks don't serve the county with the best intention in mind. I'll tell you right now, these folks work hard and they deserve to be, uh, rewarded or deserve to be received of progress and move before. But I just wanted to show you what you have here in front of you. You have coal increases across the state of South Carolina for about, looks like for about twelve plus years. And then you have inflation numbers. So you can see coal, the coal increases, cost of living increases across the state of South Carolina have been pretty, pretty, pretty normal across the board. But of course inflation, it, it ticks up, it's been going up. Um, but we, we want to try to see if we can close the gap. Um, the idea is that we demonstrate to our county employees, we committed to them. Our small investment based on some data that we've been able to do with the house. We're working on getting an, an external party to really drill down and do a comp study. But more than fifty percent of Hampton County's employees earn less than thirty, forty thousand. And based on family size, some of them earn and live federal property. When, when we ask folks to go to training to Merle Beach or Columbia, you know, it's, it's really awful. How do you send somebody to Columbia who, who makes ten bucks an hour to get trained and you have to pay for a hotel upfront? Put gas in the car, buy themselves food. So there has to be mechanisms in place to ensure all things align and you don't have to pay out of pocket, which is, it's difficult. So those types of things we're thinking about being thoughtful. But just wanted to kind of show you that context, but also show you the context of Hampton County employees. You know, by the numbers, fifty percent of employees, you know, live at, live at that line, earn at that line. What we did, we looked at pay increases across the county. And what we heard from all the partner heads, um, is that everyone needs some sense of a pay increase. Um, hopefully the sheriff will, will give you that high five and a nice.
Sir.
But, you know, we can't, those guys can't hire and recruit if something's not done. I can't hire and, and, and get folks in to help us out if, if we, we don't make this decision. Um, but we just wanted to show you some, some numbers here. You have Hampton County's payroll made six two twenty five. You have salary and data, employees with zero salary. County council, you have SROs, you have victim advocates, you have salaries under thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars. You have eighty one people. Salaries between thirty to thirty nine thousand, you have forty five. So that kind of puts things in the context. At least it does for me. And I know the decisions we have to make, you need to count for. And that's why we have chosen to, you know, make the recommendation to support other entities as much as we can. With the idea we prioritize ourselves first, here in the county. My boss.
Yeah, I just want to say I commend your effort. Um, anytime we talk about military increase, we're gonna get some negative feedback, but that's okay. Because bottom line is, when you educate people, show them what we're doing, I think they'll be more receptive to it. So I appreciate where you're going with this. Um, and everybody says they want to see the county move forward. But it's hard to move forward if you don't make hard decisions. So again, if we have to make those decisions, we just have to have a backbone, stand behind.
Another aspect is this, you know, as we talk next week, there's another component to this. We're putting in, um, a perform, a performance evaluation process. Like we're gonna expect excellence in the county, right? We want things done a certain way. We want our, our, our residents to feel like they're being cared for, they're getting responded to. I have a litany of issues that we need to address from a customer service standpoint. So, you know, we, we institute performance evaluations across the county that has teeth. And that, um, really, really, not just looking over a shoulder, you're really coaching the help folks in efficient, efficient at their jobs, effective at their jobs. So this is another, this is, this is another look at the pay increase impacting, impacting Alice. So employee wage level, you know, we looked at it from a five percent increase to a two dollar increase. Our recommendation is a two dollar increase across the entire county. Um, we have the data to what's the cost of that to the county. Um, but like I said, next Monday, we can drill down on those numbers. This kind of will show you five percent increase versus a two dollar increase. When you think about percentage versus dollar, it's different for everyone, right? If you have a higher salary, a percentage increase is going to be one advantageous for you. Someone who makes about ten bucks an hour, two dollars is a little bit more attractive, right? And so we want to be able to show what that looks like in their check when they go on. Um, but this is just another look at the context to be able to do that. The budget, so that I, I wanted to highlight the top ten departmental budget increases. Um, risk management, why did risk management go from, you know, twenty eight hundred to now six hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars? Because we moved all insurance and liabilities inside of that risk space. We have young talent who's interested in building out a risk management program. But basically all those, all those funds are kind of married into that account. That's why, that's why it looks better. So all insurances, all those pieces that reflect, um, risk management spaces will go, go inside of that. Um, chef, uh, he, so he increased from two twenty two to thirty five staffs to fully staff operations. So the recommendation is accommodate, accommodate his request, so he can have his team protected and keeping it safe. Information technology, we have a few upgrades that we're working through here in the county. We have a financial system upgrade that costs around about two hundred and somehow a thousand dollars of working on a payment line with that. But, uh, that is set to kick off, uh, in another couple of weeks. Um, but that is an exciting piece, cause that's another tool that's gonna ensure the county's being more efficient financially. That means, you know, less hands touching and more, more computers and things being automated to, to kind of be more efficient. Um, any other ones that pop out to me? But I, I'll stop there if you have any, any questions about that. And like I said, we wanted to take, take the time to kind of rethink how we talk about our budget. Give you some information to, as a context, to help you make your final decision. But like I said, next, next Monday, we're going to drill down and chat a little bit more about the budget, what it means to the county. And most importantly, what it means for us, us in the county. Um, next aspect is, uh, we're gonna ask a deputy congressman, Chris, to come up and talk about some economic development, some planning, and some airport activities with the county.
Thank you, Mr. Yoma. Good evening, council. Um, it's a great day in South Carolina. It's great to be in Hampton County. And there's so much good happening. It's been such a joy to work with Mr. Yoma. He has had some drum drum of dealing with the financial stuff, while I had so much fun doing the right thing. And, uh, so when we get together, it's a big contrast, cause he's had his big task, uh, at his, uh, on his shoulders. While I keep working, a great group of people around the county doing good stuff. So I'm gonna highlight a few things for you, Ms. Yoma's request. And really, I'm just gonna go through some building and planning information and be ready to leave or to death, Mr. Jinks. Because there's some data involved here, and, uh, so I'll try to keep it exciting and fun. Um, and I'm also gonna highlight some activity in economic development and also some activity at the airport. So as you know, the comprehensive plan is underway. Uh, so I wanted to kind of give you a summary of where we're going from here. Our consultant will be drafting the ten chapters over the summer. And we plan to, uh, sort of present that early draft to the group of stakeholders that met, um, back in April, I believe. And then from there, once we get feedback from the stakeholder group, we'll go on a roadshow. And we'll do at least three public input sessions in Estill, in UMC, in that Hampton, Barville area. Maybe we'll do more, we'll see, at least three. And then that'll be in the fall winter, where we, whatever final tweaks. And then we'll present to planning commission, excuse me, we'll present a planning commission in the fall and the early winter. And then because of that rule that if we don't get through third reading before December thirty one, we'll come to council sometime after the new year. Uh, if council wants to do some workshops, we might do a day of workshops with planning commission, uh, sort of before the council. So they can brief you on the workshops that they're gonna have. And then, uh, so we'll get into council in early twenty six, and then hopefully have a final adopted version in the spring of twenty six. So then, uh, in the words of our leader, I'll stop there if you have any questions. All right, so here's, um, some data that we put together. Um, so cost of permitting, so when we're talking about the building plan department development, what is the private sector thinking about? Well, when they're looking at Hampton County for economic development, what are some of the issues that, uh, come up? So I wanted to give you some data, you know, last budget season, we updated the county's permitting fees. And so, uh, this chart shows you that our plan review fees in Hampton County, the orange is commercial and the blue is residential. So you can see comparing the four counties, the blue for residential permit, plan review fees. We are the highest, but we're not far off from our sort of our neighboring counties view for Jasper and Collington County. But on the commercial plan review fee, we are, we are high. Um, so also on the residential, uh, plan review fee. And similarly on the permit fee. So an explanation for that is that we just updated our, our fees last year. And our plan review fee is based on fifty percent of the permit fee on the residential permits and seventy five percent on the commercial. So just hold tight and let me get through the next couple of slides. Again, this, this was also assumptions based on a hundred and fourteen dollars a square foot of construction in all res, in all jurisdictions. We know there's variations, but to do the data, we'd have to pick a number and go with it. And then a hundred fifty four dollars per square foot for cost of construction for non-residential or commercial construction. So, um, impact fees, Beaufort County has impact fees, Collington, Jasper, Hampton do not have impact fees. And then business license fees, Beaufort and Jasper have business license fees, Collington and Hampton do not have business license fees. And then we have the cost of land. So you can see the orange again is commercial land. Um, we didn't, we couldn't parse out, there wasn't enough data to really parse out Jasper, Collington, Hampton, commercial versus residential. But in Beaufort, it was part, it was easy to pull out what was, um, non-residential or commercial, the outlier. So you can see in Beaufort, the cost of land, if you develop a commercial, it's astronomical compared to, and Hampton's that low, low end. And same with residential, Beaufort's the highest with Jasper, Collington, Hampton, the lowest for the cost of land. So when you consider the total cost of fees plus the cost of land, um, Beaufort's the highest, Jasper, uh, is next. And Hampton is, um, the lowest on the residential side. And then Hampton is next to the lowest, is third on the commercial side. Again, that goes back to that commercial review, plan review fee being seventy five percent of the permit fee. Which is not how Jasper, Beaufort, and Collington calculate, but it is how many other counties in the state calculate those people. Um, so I wanted to show you this slide. We were working with the South Carolina Builders Association and in particular the Low Country Builders Association to get some more data on the cost of construction. And what the private sector is thinking about and what factors and variables they're considering when they think about, uh, investing in a, in a place. And so down in the, in the small, in the asterisk layer, these are all the different fees. Uh, this is not the cost of construction, what they're paying the contractor and the subcontractors. This is just fees that go to different agencies, uh, in the cost of building a house or building a commercial. So I'm gonna come back to you sometime in the future and kind of parse out. Uh, they provided some data for some counties, but we're still working through getting the Hampton County data for all these data points. Um, uh, so we'll continue to have that conversation with them and kind of parse out what the private sector is looking for. Uh, when they decide, um, that they want to come to Hampton County. But I'll tell you the first two bullet points. This is what the executive director of the Builders Association tells me. He says, look, the two data points that aren't covered and are hard to kind of, well, the carrying cost is not hard to know. They, they know what their carrying cost is. But when there's delays in the regulatory process and the permitting process, every day that there's a delay, the cost of the developer money, put their farm on, move their project forward. So when we're the cause of delay, that's costing them money and that's, that's not good. So we want to turn their plans around and we want to be there on call for inspections and do what we can. So this is the conversation I have with everybody is, look, we have plan review, we can turn your plan review around. Uh, usually within about forty eight hours, we schedule plan reviews every Wednesday. If we can get them digitally, we can usually turn them around without waiting till Wednesday. Uh, Safe Build does a really good job. When we upload that, those digital plans, they can review them remotely and turn them around very quickly. Commercial plans might take a little bit longer, but it's never more than ten days. Uh, but usually, you know, within a week, those commercial plans can, can be reviewed and, uh, additional comments provided. And I always tell people when we're meeting with them, you know, we're accessible staff, we're just a phone call or an email away. I often give out my work number, um, to any, I mean, my mobile number. So if anybody needs anything, we, we're accessible and available to them. And then when we have certain special circumstances, as long as we're made aware of them, we, we work real hard to, um, accommodate those special circumstances. Any questions here? All right, moving on to economic development. So this is what's really exciting about, um, all the activity that's going on. And Dustin gives regular updates to our TDC meetings. Um, but this is a summary for you all of what, what's going on. So we just did the ribbon cutting at the Low Country Food Bank. Uh, we are under construction for the third expansion of New P. I'll say third expansion, it's the, the first project, the second, the expansion, and then the third. So this is the third investment in Hampton County. Uh, we're constructing the road extension in the park, uh, which is a hundred percent paid for by grant money. Um, well, the water tower is under construction, it's gonna go up soon. They've been doing all the site prep, when you drive by, you can see that activity going on in the industrial campus. This spec building has broken ground, it's permitted, and it should be coming out of the ground any day now. This spec building has broken ground. It's permitted, and it should be coming out of the ground any day now. Uh, the Laker State Warehouse, if you haven't been back there, go back there, take a look. It's pretty incredible to watch thirty million dollar project come out of the ground. And it's on schedule to be completed, you know, probably in November, maybe a little bit earlier. But definitely by the end of the year. Uh, the greenhouse, you know, we'll be, keep being told they're gonna be ready to break ground and finance. So that's coming any day. We've gone through some preliminary plans with them. They have plan review approval. So we're, we're ready to permit them because they've proved on all the plan reviews. We just will have to update everything in the system. And then, uh, I don't know if y'all have seen it yet, but we're gonna try and get you, uh, an image of the new sign at the regional park, so the county's park, um, Bob Gifford. We have an old, uh, outdated sign. So Dustin and John at SCA have been working with some available funds to update that sign. I think it's about eighty thousand dollars. So it's gonna, it's gonna be lit and it's gonna be bigger. And we'll be able to see Laker State, who's been there, first tenant, nice sign, highlighting them and all the other tenants in there. So that's exciting stuff that, that our partner has been busy, um, on behalf of the county for. But this is what's doubly exciting is this list of what the EDC is going to complement economic development in Hampton County. And two years ago, this slide would have ended with everything on the left. But because of the hard work of your, uh, Economic Development Committee, we're adding all of these activities. We just completed the Ag and Art Tour for the first time. The Economic Development Commission, the Airport Commission are working on a event that they've done, Pumpkins, Pigs, and Planes, which will be a fundraiser for, for both entities, for economic development and to move forward their programs without reliance on county money. Uh, we're gonna be coming forward at our next meeting proposing a commuter parking lot and food truck court project out at the Bob Gifford Park. Um, so keep your eye out for that. I'll give you more details at our next meeting. Economic Development Commission has recommended approval of moving that project forward. We've been discussing potential development of accounting on property, um, down in Estle at Tiger Street. It's, there'll be more details coming forward. We're working on this grant money that will help us master plan that, that development of that project. And there's four components to it right now, including a dog park, um, a playground, uh, workforce housing, apartment home type, uh, housing, uh, possibly an RV campground and some conservation timber area on the property. So we'll be drilling that forward to talk to you about, um, EDC's working on communications and marketing, the logo flag project is all part of their strategic plan that overlap with council's strategic plan. We are, we have a RFQ, RFP out for the local project at exit thirty-eight, which should be closing next month, I think. So hopefully we'll be, uh, getting, uh, a qualified firm on board to help us get through the approachment, permit process with DOT and all of the other details. We are ready to sign a contract and do the due diligence on the high school site to convert it to a rec center, which we're gonna talk about more in the executive session. And then we'll have early conversations about how to support entrepreneurs by creating an innovation center and modeling, um, Barnwell, Barnwell's very successful program that they came to presentation to EDC. I feel like we could do our, our version, Hampton version of innovation center. Exciting stuff. Like I said, this would have ended two years ago with column on the left. But, um, we're, we're busy and it's great, it's great to be in Hampton and it's great to be in South Carolina. So on the horizons, as we talk about budget, um, I can't give you exact numbers right now, but the Laker State Warehouse will come online. That fee low agreement's in place. And, uh, that one is probably about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in annual revenue to the county. That's after taking out the ten percent for the other counties in the municipal parks. So, um, and then the spec building, we don't know. It's too early to know what the numbers are gonna be on that. And New P three will be coming. Uh, it varies. That fee low, fee run, if it comes to fruition, it's, it's low the first couple of years and it gets a little bit higher and then it goes back down. So we'll get you some harder numbers at, at some point in the future. Or if, if we have a weak budget, we'll have to review those numbers. And then Iron Mine Metals, this was a development in the county embassy. It's gonna be bringing on some new tax revenue, um, in this next, this coming year. So all told, over the next two years, we're looking at five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars of, 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 uh, from these projects. Hampton County Airport, so this is our wonderful airport with the new hangars, and resurfaced taxiway and runway. And this is the list of activities going on at the airport. Collaboration with EDC on the, on the Ag and Art and the Fall Festival coming. We're working on a beacon right now. Hopefully it'll be installed in the fall of this year. Ninety percent paid for by state Aeronautics Commission, ten percent with available airport funds outside of the county fund. So that, that's just a monopole with a light that communicates, that, that tells the pilots that it's an airport here. And that's all in just anticipation of later on down, it says lighting runway project. So, um, let me, let me not get ahead of myself, but we've recently installed four cameras out at the airport. Uh, we recently treated the fence line vegetation and stormwater ponds. That's been completed. That was covered ninety percent by the state and ten percent by county. I was, I'll use some paperwork on that. I'll be getting up to as soon as I can. And then, uh, we're doing some signage. I'll show you the sign in a minute. And then this tree and light pole obstruction project, similar to the beacon, these are prerequisites for lighting the runway. So we gotta get the beacon up there. We gotta get the obstructions and the approach to the airport cleared of, of trees. And then there's a couple of light poles. We're working with Dominion to figure out how to appropriately get those out of the airspace approaching. And then hopefully in two years, we'll have a lighted runway which will open up. It's lighted at work, give you a lit runway. And, uh, and that's gonna open up so many great opportunities for that airport, uh, to continue on the trajectory that it's on. And we're on a waitlist for our hangars. That's pretty awesome. It's all, they've only been around two years now. We're on a wait, waitlist. So we're managing that late waitlist. We're also doing a hangar rate study and have some recommendations on, uh, you know, not just, not if we should increase the hangar rate, but what increase should be. Because we're working for, for an increase. We have a staff vacancy. Mr. Charlie, who's been up there, is leaving us in about two weeks. Um, so we gotta manage that. We're looking to, for NIPUS, that's our federal FAA recognition as a federally recognized airport. We're hope, we're looking to, uh, make application in twenty twenty-seven as we continue to lay some groundwork for a successful application. We recently bought a new tractor to mow all the grass out there. We put in a segmented circle. This was something the Airport Commission did on their own, the volunteer their time and their treasure to get done. But, uh, a couple of years ago, the, 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 um, runway direction changed. And as part of that change, this is some technical stuff that's over in my head, but as part of that, they had to put in this segmented circle out in the field. And what that circle does is it communicates to the pilots, uh, which direction to land in the, um, on the runway. And that's in case the radios aren't, are down or there's nobody available there. We'll communicate with them. They'll, they'll see the segmented circle from the air. And then we, we, I've been busy applying, updating online information on our external sites. There's a lot of old information, old phone numbers and names of folks, um, on those external websites. So just updating those, learning how to market the airport, learning what resources are out there. And we're working with, uh, a volunteer, um, to create a SOP for the airport. So all the information that I've been learning and working with is folks to learn who can hand the manuals to anyone who's helping us manage that airport. So, I mean, just fun, just fun stuff, way more fun than trying to fix the financial stock. And so it's been a pleasure, um, you know, on Mr. Yoma's direction to, to work with all these folks. I just wanted to share this. This is a sign that's gonna go up at the airport, sort of advertising Hampton County for economic development opportunities. And what I really, what I really wanna highlight about this is that logo's at the bottom. Because this is a partnership between the state, South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, the Economic Development Commission, the county, and the Airport Commission and other partners. And this is how we gotta get stuff done, right? Is through these partnerships. We can tackle complex problems. We can implement and execute, um, difficult projects when we work together. And, um, I just think this is just a great way to end my presentation. Just continuing to build with partnerships in all the different areas, um, to help improve the county's tax base and financial situation in the long term. So if there's no questions, I'll have you see. Thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you, please.
Thank you, Council. Thank you for the second reading. Uh, next week is a session workshop, talk through the budget that we sent over last week, but also talk through, uh, what we chatted about today. You know, there's tons of lemons in the county. We gotta focus on how we can make lemonade. And that's what a lot of folks have been focusing, however we can before. So, yeah, good for us. Talk to you then. Keep it warm out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Let me, let me comment to you. And I need to, I wanna make a comment service on record. You are my eyes and ears. I gotta speak for myself, but I think that's good for five gentlemen. Neither one of us sit here every day to go through what you go through, to know what you go, do. And, um, to talk to who you talk to. So you just know, when you recommend something to us with your finance team, we greatly depend on you to give us the right information. We never, I don't think we, we, neither, not one in five would just take your word because you bring it to us and you prove it. So I appreciate you. And for our employees getting a raise, I always tell you, if you can show me how we can continue to raise, I'm gonna support your efforts, your recommendation. And I think I can speak for the following. And I want that to be on record for my employees.
Any other comments? If none, uh, so, uh, we're, uh, the second reading of the orders. So where's the budget, Council?
Chair, Mr. Moshin, I need to approve the second reading of the budget.
Moshin has conveyed that the proper second, any further comments or discussion? If none, all those who are approved on the second reading, this will be in twenty twenty-six, our budget, from your approval, raise your right hand. Anyone opposed? Anyone understand? But now, item number eleven point two B, second reading of the orders, authorize a tax participation note in the amount of not to see one million, eight hundred thousand dollars and other matters related to there too.
Right. Right. So, you know, we, we, we took the ten out last year. About three weeks, we were able to pay it back, I think, January, early January. Uh, looking at the numbers, we feel comfortable, I think, first session, we said one point five, but we sort of said, sorry, we're gonna look at putting that RFP out for about one point eight. But the county's done, we did, we did it back on time as related to ten over the past few years. And this is no different. But, uh, it's gonna supplement us in addition to some of the things we talked about, paying our bills and getting, uh, addresses and relationships that we're trying to address in the county. That was some, some drop off.
The redesign of our middle structure would eliminate us having to get cans, I suppose. That's the goal, which, yeah.
So where's the pleasure, Council? Mr. Chair, I made the movement to approve the second reading of the order to authorize a tax participation note in the amount not to see one million, eight hundred thousand dollars and other matters related to there too.
Thank you.
Moshin has conveyed that the proper second, any further comments or discussion? If none, all those who are approved, uh, the second reading of the orders, uh, show your approval by raising your right hand. Anyone opposed? Anyone understand? And now, item number eleven point three, if you may have the first reading of the orders, um, this evening. Item number twelve, Council briefing, first point, have our chairman's update. I do not have an update, no update, uh, this evening. Uh, am I right with Councilman, uh, Williams?
Yes.
Councilman James?
You spoke about it before, sir, about the flea, the defense station and the ministry building. I spoke with you earlier and I was hoping to have a share of the teeth here to request. I think we've been over this with those cats across the street. I have had them with myself. They were fleas with them myself. But there's no way we can sit and allow those signs, uh, neutered cats. And if you go on that building, you see it's a drop off. And those cats are going under the building. We have employees in here that gotta fight those fleas every day. So the request is our animal control officer, Ron, use cat, bro. If you will, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any, any comments?
That's it, sir. Just a note, Captain, he is in training today and tomorrow.
That's fine. That's fine. It's just that it's costing the taxpayers money for us to have to treat that building for them to volunteer a drop off point and they don't contain them. If they gotta contain it over there for them and they leave them, I'm fine. But they let them roam and they take, choose and take home under our building. And take shelter, I'm sorry.
Councilor? Um, only man would like to bring everybody attention that the town of Gifford is having their June sixth festival this week. Started yesterday with the gospel kickoff and they're gonna be going on all week. I know the, I like they have the mayor's fair breakfast will be on Saturday, uh, Friday morning at eight. Parade will be at eleven o'clock, uh, AM, um, Saturday morning. And also, um, it's been, it's, what, I think, I can speak for Council when I say this. We are, I think it's about a month ago, we approved to, uh, support, give a donation towards Waterman Festival as well as the June sixth fest. And we have two before us tonight. And we want everybody to know that as a county, if they are established festivals, our effort is, our intent is to support all the festivals that are, that meets the guidelines. We have advocacy for them. And if they meet the guideline, we're gonna be fair to all of the, uh, festivals. So I just wanna make note of that because I understand that, you know, there are rumors about, you know, which festival we're supporting. Our intent is to be fair to all of the established festivals in this county. Thank you, sir. Council, uh, Johnson?
Chair, I don't have any, any, any other things to mention.
Item number, uh, twelve point three, uh, county attorney's update. Uh, twelve point four, uh, folks update. I don't have any, Jim. But now, item number thirteen, uh, ministry's report, uh, financial update. But that being said, we'll, item number fourteen, uh, executive session. We have several, um, items that we're gonna be discussing in the executive session. The first was fourteen point one, discussion of negotiation incident, two homes, uh, contractual arrangement and wholesale or purchase of property. Three dash four dash seven, A, which is an export, bad purchase. TMS number one thirty-six dash oh one dash oh eight dash oh oh eight. Fourteen point two, receive a B with bias, thirty dash four dash seven, A, low dosage identification. Fourteen point three, receive a B with bias, thirty dash four dash seven, A, auto process, food identification. Fourteen point four, receive a B with bias, thirty dash four dash seven, A, land dispute, street, district settlement. Fourteen point five, discussion of negotiation, this been to the court. Fourteen point five, discussion of negotiation business to propose contractual arrangements. Thirty dash four dash seven, A, which is the council fall festival and the UMC Trump festival. Fourteen point six, discussion of apartments. Thirty dash four dash seven, A, forms and conditions, as well as two items that we refer to the executive session, which is approval of Beaufort Design Bill contract to perform due diligence on the conversion of the high school site to a renovation center. And also request approval for fall festival event at the airport. With that being said, what is the pleasure, council?
So move.
Thank you. Motion has been accepted and bottomed on comments. If none, all those who are approved that we want to executive session, show your approval by raising your right hand. Anyone opposed? Anyone staying? For now, on the executive session, Friday, great.